Right, so it is five o'clock, so I will call the meeting. Right, we're over here. Alright, awesome. Okay, so the first thing we will do is call to order. So Heather Shipley. Alright, she raised her hand. Catherine?
Present.
Maria Not, here. Charlene?
Here.
Oh. She made it. Perfect. Okay, Nikia, I am here. Lisa Smith. Who is not present. Secretary is here. And then Dan Brim. Alright. So the next, oh, and then, do I do other people that are in the room as well?
Just to take note of them, yeah.
Okay, and then the other people. Um, should I call them out?
Sure.
Yeah, okay. Mr. Rodriguez?
You don't have to.
Oh, okay, sorry. And then Ms. Nicole Cruz Blacken. And then. Anne Oliver. And Mary Magrath. Alright. Sounds good. So we will, the first part of the order is residents and property owners. They have comments that are limited to three minutes. Does anybody want to volunteer to go first?
Is somebody else trying to speak tonight? Certainly, I'm not sure.
I am not sure. If you would like to go first, I am going to set my phone for a timer for three minutes, so let me just get to that.
Or should I just wait through the section that talks about me?
Um, so our order goes, it's.
Well, it's a, it's a public meeting.
Of course.
It's a meeting held in public, but it's not a public meeting, so that's why we allow that at the front end of the meeting.
I felt the tension.
Okay, so I'm gonna go ahead.
I assume everybody read the letter that the mayor wrote me in response to our one and a half hour meeting that we had upstairs. Okay, it was in agenda. I responded to him as well. It took a little while to get a response. But on the second time. This was before the woman came in and tried to threaten him, but anyways. Good morning, I was grateful to finally receive your response regarding the concerning conduct of Maran member Maria Not on Ledger Youth and Social Services Board. Upon reading your letter, I'm disappointed that your response would focus primarily on a strict legal interpretation of her actions and not their effort. I mean, effect or where you could take action. By demonstrating that the threshold for action is purely illegal, you appear to tolerate what she did. Ms. Not's choice of words was not just simply poor, as you described it. They had a direct effect on the well-being of your residents and placed them and their children at risk. While I appreciate knowing that nothing legal was done, it is important that you exercise the power of your office to show that residents being treated in this way should not be accepted. It would go a long way to help the climate in this town and make you a more unifying mayor. Can you publicly remind all the residents to treat each other with decency and respect? When you put out a policy that those appointed by you must be sensitive to the effects of their words and actions and that they may be misinterpreted as representing the town? They should be held to similar standards as an employee, and you appear to understand that what was done to Mrs. Cruz Blacken and Mr. Mayo was unacceptable. And we need you to convey that message to our residents. This is as far as this is allowed to go before someone takes your silence on these matters as you're accepting it. Still no response, right? Excuse me. I'm focusing on Mrs. Not's actions, because she knows she knowingly placed community members and their children at risk. Ms. Not sits on a board whose members are appointed by you and that provides outreach and community education to meet the needs of youth families and individuals. I will continue to insist that she resign and apologize. Still no apology, not even apology, not a word. Because her actions make her unfit to carry out the Youth and Social Services Board's mission. You may not agree that she must resign, but as someone who was appointment you made and whose action you know were wrong on some level, how do you think that keeping her in good standing could reflect on you? If I don't finish, I will email everybody, copy this, plus the correspondence after. I am, Ms. Donahue's post was meant to show that there was clear evidence, because the first sent, the first paragraph of his response to me applied very little to what our conversation was for an hour and a half, and then he went about the legality of it in the last two paragraphs, and didn't make sense, honestly, if you want to look at it or read it, just didn't apply to what I was talking about. Hmm, I said, are you going to at least recommend an apology for making unfounded accusations and potentially placing the lives of your residents at risk? I understand. I'll send the rest.
Are there any other community members that would like to speak? Alright, the next section that we have added tonight are any board member comments.
I, I mean, I have, I guess I have, I don't know if I want to say I have comments, I have concerns about, um, how, what format is this allowed to continue and how productive it is to our reason for gathering as a committee? That's a concern for me. The, the topic itself, I don't know if this is the format to get into a back and forth debate over what we each personally feel over the subject matter. I just don't feel like it's the format for it. So I won't, even though I have feelings or thoughts, I just don't think that this is the place to even sit here and spend the time in it. It's just not the right format.
Go ahead, Catherine.
I would agree with that as well. It, it seems to me that, you know, this has continued to go on for several meetings now and it tends to be disruptive to the meeting. And I would agree also that it, you know, I don't think this is the place for that to be addressed, you know, there may be issues, I don't know. You know, I don't know all the details of the situation, but, but it seems to me that it, it's detracts from the meeting of the board, and I don't know what else to say other than that.
Any other comments?
I would just add that this is a personal vendetta. And bringing it to a social service board is just completely distracting. It takes away from what we're trying to achieve. And the picture in question was on Nicole's Facebook page for months. So it's not like I went out and did something. Um, so you know, this is a personal attack toward me. There's nothing that I can do to control this.
We're going to move forward with the review and approval from last meeting on March 15th. Everybody has a copy of those minutes. Do I have someone that can move them?
I would move that we approve the minutes from the last meeting.
And a second, a second. And then all in favor? We're gonna move on to the reports. The first one is the Youth Services Report. Alright. Okay, so first up, Jeremie. April, we had one review and the case was successfully completed. In May, we had another review. I know it says case successfully completed, but actually that case remains open. And there are just that one current open case, which is J R B, from our May review. Truancy, we have one new case, which isn't currently active, just because I'm struggling to connect with the parents. Counseling side, I have 22 active cases. Our new interns from the University of Rhode Island have started, they started on second week and third week in April. So they have transfer cases, so Glenn has six current cases. Natalie has six cases. And Serena, who is our short-term family program clinician that we were able to kind of secure for a two-month period, has five cases. Her last week will be the beginning of June, and the cases that she's currently carrying will either be transferred to Glenn or Natalie and/or referred out for further counseling if we are not the right level of care for them. So currently 37 active cases as of May 6th, that's currently changed, but six cases on the waitlist currently. I'm working this week on getting most of those cases placed with that we have now. No groups at this point, we're close to the end of school. So you are interns that started. Unfortunately, St. Joseph's University is no longer an accredited marriage and family therapy program, so we won't be getting interns from them in the coming year until they either get re-credited or we just won't get them anymore. I've reached out to Central to see if we could possibly be an internship site for them for a second time and haven't really connected with anybody to kind of secure that for us. And that is pretty much it right now. Any questions? Right, I'm moving on to the Social Services Report.
Alright, good evening, everyone. Some food pantry statistics. In March, we had 78 client visits. We served 119 eligible clients. April, 65 client visits. We served 107 eligible clients. I do apologize and I'll amend this for the minutes. In March, we have one new client sign up. In April, we had two. We have had nine new clients year-to-date. We are seeing some more families. I know they're mentioning every month, families, current, current families coming back to the pantry, and it seems that the, the new sign-ups that I'm getting are also families, so households of three or more. Referrals, we are still seeing quite a few for Connecticut Fair Housing having to do with, with evictions and folks looking for affordable housing in the area. Lycef, we have been seeing a steady requests for Lycef for rental assistance, mortgage assistance, moving assistance, different things related to Lycef. So we did have three Lycef requests that were approved in March and April. TVCCA Energy Assistance, just one, that is certainly winding down for the season. The deadline is, is in May or until funds run out, so I did have someone actually just reach out to me today, so I have an email out to my contact with TVCCA to see if they still have any funds left for this year. If not, it will open up at back again next year, so I'll keep you all updated on that. We're getting a lot of calls that, that need referrals or directed over for this, to the State Department of Social Services, whether it's for healthcare, SNAP benefits, things of that nature, so referring folks over to there, the Norwich Office. And one referral during this time period to elder protective services. Any questions on any of the food pantry meal referrals this month for the past two months?
Thank you. Moving on to the old business, the first set is Parks and Rec Summer Camp Scholarship.
Alright, I just wanted to give everyone an update on this. So Parks and Rec Summer Camp Scholarships have been going well. I know I mentioned last time we started a snowball fundraiser so that residents can donate directly to the campaign online, so that is wonderful. So far, we have awarded scholarships for 15 campers in the amount of $7,468.75. We have $417 left in our fund. Just to give you a comparison, because I think this is important, last year total for FY21, we granted 11 camper scholarships and the total amount was $4,743, which was the most that we've spent in any of the records I could see going back. So there is certainly an increased need in this area. I don't think that would be surprising, you know, to anyone with what we've seen with COVID this increase. I do have five campers currently on the waitlist. Thankfully, the budget passed. That included $10,000 set aside in the ARPA funding for Parks and Recreation Summer Camp Scholarships. I've been working with Matt Bone and our finance director and Ian. Those funds need to be accounted for separately, but I got the go-ahead to go ahead and I can start actually allocating those funds. So to, I will start tomorrow processing the five that are sitting on my desk, so we can go ahead and get those camper slots in summer camp. And we'll continue, right now, at this point, I'll move over to that $10,000 bucket and be, and use that before I go back to our regular bucket, so I'm gonna leave that $400 there. I will still continue to write grants, still welcome people to, you know, submit money, because that, those funds will just continue to carry over from year to year. You know, I know I also mentioned last meeting that right now, with the limited funds we have, we only do summer camp. You know, I would love to get to the point where this is just a revolving, you know, we get donations like the food pantry that we're able to actually, you know, on a yearly basis, set a cap for households and award scholarships for other programs, whether it be tumbling or gymnastics, you know, throughout the year. But right now, we are just limited to summer camp, so I'll have some more updates on you next meeting with, with where we're at with summer camp, so going well. And again, you know, I'm confident we'll be able to help all five on the waitlist and hopefully more kids with camp. So working with Scott on that, making sure there are slots for all those campers. So any questions on summer camp?
How much is a camp?
So it's, it's $125 per week. So it's six, it's six weeks, so the full cost is $7.25. We have kind of a sliding scale, and, and I know you're new, and I'm happy to email you the scholarship form, so we took a look at some income guidelines, what other towns did, revamped it this year. So based on your household size and your income, we do award full scholarships, you may get a 50% scholarship, 25. So, you know, based on what the family's needs are, we have a range of amounts. We do have a $1,000 cap per household. You know, so, you know, we try to help as many households as we can, and I work with the families. Here's what we can award to you, you know, are you able to pay $40 per week? Or do you want to reduce it down and, you know, we can do three weeks? So I, I work with the family on what, on what they can, what they can, if they can cover anything and, and working with them. So each situation is a little bit different.
For people who want to sponsor, do you feel like that system where people can go in and submit whatever monetary amount they could do was, like, did that work well? Do you feel like people?
Well, you know, it's still open, so, you know, we got five donations, which I think is, is fabulous. So, you know, we raised $1,050 so far, and it's, and it's still open.
Okay.
Um, you know, now that we have the $10,000, I want to, you know, start working on, on that pool of money, but, um, you know, Scott's put it on the Facebook page, I put it on the Food Pantry page, it's gone on the Ledger News page. So, you know, we're getting the word out there, I'm going to, too, in the next edition of Events Magazine, kind of do just kind of whole write-up overview of these programs and, and letting people know, hey, if you, because this was new, we've never had it before. If you want to donate for scholarships, here's where you go. If you want to donate for the food pantry, here's where you go. So, I mean, it's, it's, it's open, it's never gonna shut down. People can donate to that whenever they want.
And is there a letter that businesses could receive from the town that says that they donated money?
Yes, we, yes, when you donate, you get a letter back, right?
Good to know.
Absolutely.
For businesses or?
Or individuals, yes.
For anybody.
Yes, everybody receives a thank you letter with the amount.
Great. Any other questions? Is there something in the chat?
Yes, let me, let me take a look at that.
Nicole with a comment.
It's a comment.
Okay. Like after the?
Yep.
Okay. For the next thing of old business, number two is the Holiday Programs Adopt a Family Program Discussion.
Okay, so I know we had a bit of a lengthy discussion about this last month. You know, took it back, kind of have talked to folks that are involved, so I think the consensus is keeping both components, the adoptive family and the, the truck, the Santa runs, you know, so with adopting, people will get granted some wishes, and then with all of the toys that we collect, people get to shop. You know, I, I think what I'm leaning is kind of, we're gonna have more families this year, for sure. We're gonna have more, so definitely concerned if we'll have enough people in the community to adopt. But we collect so much and we have so many gift cards, what I'm thinking we do is, okay, adopt two wishes. You know, maybe not three or four, because then we can accommodate, you know, you'll get, you know, choose two things, so it's, you know, we can spread that out among the residents that volunteer to adopt, you know, to adopt a child under 18. And then we will still have plenty for the parent or guardian to shop for another four, five, even six items for that child, and then having the gift cards available for that 12 and older age group that we're really noticing in polling and talking with other towns, that that's what they're doing for those ages. So, you know, doing it all, not exactly the same way we've always done it, but making it just more manageable, and I, I know that we're, we're gonna have more this year than we did this year, just with the new families that have signed up within the last three months. So, um, I'll have more info on that, obviously, as we get closer, and we'll definitely be looking for if anyone's available to help and volunteer at those events. That would be wonderful, so hopefully by next meeting I'll have the dates for those, so you can take a look at your schedules and see if anyone's able to help out with that. Any, any other feedback? I know, we talked about it quite, quite a bit last time.
Yeah. The third thing is the ARPA Funding Update, a licensed clinician.
Naomi, you want to take it?
Thank you. So at a town council meeting back in April, we have several residents come up stating that we need funds from ARPA to support mental health for the youth. And I agree. With the help of Kate, we were able to draft a letter that we sent to the town council members and finance committee members. And we were able to secure $190,000 for a licensed clinician for the youth services. As you can see, there's many students on the youth on the waiting list. So I'm hoping that when a licensed clinician is hired, that there will no longer be people waiting on the waiting list, and that those who do not know about the program, we can communicate so that they are aware, and that maybe more people will come forward. Mental health is very dear to me, and I'm so grateful to the town council members, the finance committee members, Kate for helping, and Mayor Allen for helping toward this goal. So thank you very much, and thank you to the sport.
I know that I've reached out to Dawn to help me kind of draft a job description, the contracted position. So we're kind of in the midst of working on that. I think that's the next step.
Just me, my question?
Yeah, good job description and then posting it and seeing.
If you don't, if we, understanding that the, the hiring environment is challenging right now. If you don't get a good applicant, is it, is it an option, hiring almost on a per diem type basis? Where, where we find, you know, LCSWs in our immediate area and contract with them?
In terms of like ones that already have practices or?
Right, yeah, somebody that's already a licensed clinician, but, but maybe, you know, with a standalone operation and we could utilize their services so that we don't have a waitlist.
So it's kind, I think that's kind of my thinking is how this is gonna work anyway. So I don't anticipate that it's going to be somebody that doesn't already work somewhere else or do something else. So it's gonna be a part-time position, contracted like per diem, they're just gonna be paid for the hours that they're here. And hopefully we find somebody licensed that wants some extra money and help out with community, so.
So is the, is it part-time, how much money has been set aside for that? Or is that even?
$190,000 is what was allocated from ARPA.
Right, over three years.
Oh, okay.
Right, three years. Yeah, so we have, yeah. We have to fully expend it by December 31st of 2020.
Okay, so you're hoping to get, would you like a full-time, but a part-time will do?
I think part-time would be great.
Okay.
And it could be any discipline, social work, licensed professional counselor, or MFT?
Yeah, because it doesn't, a licensed clinician doesn't need supervision. So if it was an unlicensed clinician, it would have to be somebody that was in, in MFT.
Okay.
Or with a license that an MFT supervisor could do, so. But with a licensed clinician, then we don't have to worry about that.
Okay.
Moving forward to new business, this is the response from Mayor Allen regarding concerns related to Youth and Social Services Board Member Maria Not.
Yep, so I wanted to make sure, I know that Ms. Holland has attended several meetings, and I wanted to make sure that you were aware that I did respond to her in a timely manner after she came to my office. I have not quite truthfully engaged with Ms. Holland recently, because I find it somewhat ironic that what she said tonight, talking about hate, et cetera, yet here she is engaging in name-calling with me on social media platforms. So I just don't feel like it's a good use of my time in terms of constructive use of my time to engage with somebody that's, that's choosing a path like that. But nonetheless, I felt it was important that you saw my written response to her. That was timely. I know she didn't like it, but that's how it is, you know? She may not like it, but I did respond and I did provide her a written response based on her, her meeting and her, her request.
Number two is review updated policies. This is in regards to the remote meeting participation and electronic communication.
So everybody got the policy?
Okay.
Were there any?
Any questions, Catherine, I think you?
I'd just been reading it, I wanted to double-check that remote participation would count toward a quorum, is that correct?
Yes, that is correct, yes. So, um, but you do need to have a certain number of people physically in the room for the meeting, so the chairman, and then I believe it's three for this group, and I can just double-check right now, just so we're on the same page. Yeah, so for a committee voting members, a body of seven to nine, three members need to physically be at the, in the location. But quorum includes both remote and in-person.
So it's chair plus two, Catherine. So chair plus two, and the idea behind that, that thinking is that what we don't want to have is have a public come to participate in a meeting only to find out that they're staring at a camera and nobody's present live.
Right, yeah, that makes.
The best option.
Any other questions regarding the policy? And then the last thing we have is the Pack It Back to School, the Backpack and School Supplies Program.
Yes, so I know we are still within this school year, but, um, believe it or, so I will start putting the word out pretty much as soon as school gets out to start collecting donations for the backpack program, so, you know, we're good, let, let's let everyone finish the school year. And then, um, you know, it's probably late June, I will start putting that request out. What, what we do is create a wish list. I'll go on Amazon and create a wish list with backpacks on there, so, you know, kind of pick out like a middle school, high school-type backpack, and then an elementary school backpack. I mean, we will take whatever folks want to give, but sometimes people just kind of want to, you know, kind of keep it uniform, keeping them the same. And then folks can purchase those right on Amazon and drop them off at town hall, and then we'll have a list of other suggested items. And then folks can purchase those right on Amazon and drop them off at Town Hall, and then we'll have a list of other suggested items, you know, crayons, um, notebooks, all those sorts of things. I have, uh, we have got quite the donation last year, so I actually have a really good stash of notebooks and pens and pencils and backpacks, but I'm sure we will need more, so again, that's just something I will, um, email you all out. Once I have launched it on the website, um, we'll put on Facebook, and then, you know, you're welcome to share that on your social media sites, get the word out that we are collecting donations. Signups for clients will go out in mid-July, and then we distribute everything about two weeks before school starts. I'll distribute it all the day down here. Um, I'll probably pick like a Wednesday and do something from four to six, something like that, so folks can, can come and pick up after hours as well, so. Um, any questions on that, but really, um, you know, I'll just let you know when we're collecting donations, so you can help, help spread the word.
And you can, um, like on the Amazon wishlist, like you don't even have to do anything, because it gets sent directly to the town hall.
Yeah, to get sent directly.
So you don't have to drop anything off, so it's easy for sponsors to be able to go in and just.
Yes, and like I said, but, but we will accept anything, so, you know, you want to go to Walmart or go to Ocean State and, and drop stuff off, but I will create that Amazon wishlist, um, just to give folks some direction on what we're looking for.
Yeah. Any other questions?
One of the things we try to do too with the backpacks is uniformity of sizing and everything is important, but not all the same, because we don't want, we don't want kids to potentially be singled out, like, oh, you've all got the orange backpack and the white stripes. So we try to make sure that there's a good mix of that, so that they, you know, blend in well.
The chat was good?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, any other questions about the backpack? Pack it back to school.
That was the name, I didn't change it.
Okay, so then I think that brings it to adjournment at five thirty-two. But, uh, motion to adjourn, sorry.
I, I will move that we adjourn the meeting.
All in favor? Okay, thank you.
All right, you, everyone.
Thank you, everyone.
Have a good night.
Feel better, Naomi.
Thank you.